Start the Simsbury Board of Selectmen meeting for March 24th. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So before we call this public hearing to order, we're going to do a quick presentation recognizing March 21st, which was last week, as Down Syndrome Day in Simsbury. A resident reached out to me and she was part of the Down Syndrome Association in Connecticut who sent me this proclamation. We made a couple tweaks to it, but to recognize that the impact of Down Syndrome on people across the state, the town, the country. So we're going to start down that end. Everybody's going to read part of it. So, Ellen?
Whereas people with Down Syndrome deserve fundamental human and civil rights, including full participation in decision-making about matters relating to or affecting their lives. And nearly 3,000 people with Down Syndrome and their families reside in the state of Connecticut. And?
Whereas medical care has improved the life expectancy for those with Down Syndrome from 25 years in 1980 to more than 60 years today. And educational opportunities from childhood through post-secondary education have increased preparation for employment and independent living. And?
Whereas these changes have resulted from the collective efforts of families, medical, educational, and therapeutic professionals, individuals with Down Syndrome, and groups such as the Down Syndrome Association of Connecticut, which has provided information, resources, and support to the Down Syndrome community for 39 years. And?
Whereas on December 19th, 2011, the UN declared March 21st as World Down Syndrome Day and to signify the uniqueness of Down Syndrome and the trisomy of the 21st chromosome. And?
Whereas the town of Simsbury and the Aging and Disability Commission supports the recognition of World Down Syndrome Day in order to raise awareness and promote the rights, inclusion, and well-being of people with Down Syndrome.
Now therefore be it resolved, I Wendy McStudis, First Selectman, hereby proclaim March 21st as Down Syndrome Day and hope that we all join in celebrating the lives and equality of people with Down Syndrome and encouraging the empowerment of those with Down Syndrome who live within our communities so that they may reach their full potential. It's signed by me and the full Board of Selectmen. So, not sure, I may reach out to somebody to give this to unless we give it to Ed, you know, from the Aging and Disability Commission. Thank you. Okay, so public hearing. So let me get my public hearing notice to open the public hearing. I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 70, Building Construction.
Make that motion.
So, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to ask if anyone is here for the public hearing, and it's not Susan Messino, who would like to come up and speak for the public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for the public hearing? No, Helen is here for the public audience, I believe. That's what Tom said. Yep. Anybody here for the public hearing? I'm going to ask again. People tell you you're supposed to do it three times, which I never do. Anybody here for the public hearing? So I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 70, Building Construction.
When will you close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Okay, that bit fast. Hold on, please. The next item is public audience. So right now I have, Helen Peterson is on Zoom, so I'm going to let Helen go so I don't forget that she's there. Helen, you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, good. Helen Peterson, 20 Longview Drive. Although I'm a member of the Open Space Committee, I speak tonight again on the, for myself and as an individual to the item, Item E, under Selectmen's Action of Your Agenda. Really buried in there. This item appeared on your agenda last September. The submission form at that time was authored by the town manager, Mr. Nelson. I spoke in public audience in gross disapproval of the sale of this parcel to the abutting owner. At that meeting, Mr. Nelson approached me and invited me to come in to visit with him. We met for over two and a half hours, in which time I learned, among many things, his interest that prompted him to submit this proposal to you. And only after just the months after he had begun working in our town, hardly enough time to get to know us, he proceeded to liken Simsbury to Poughkeepsie, where he had been working, where they had experienced similar-sized town-owned parcels that posed a grievous problem as derelict. I immediately reminded him that Simsbury was not Poughkeepsie. In that long conversation, I asked him if he knew of our ordinance 21A or the important document of the Open Space Inventory, to which point he said he did not. And I asked him, was this submission drafted by him alone? And he replied no, that he had relied on his team in Town Hall referring to the planning department. Well, they should have certainly known about these things and should have informed him. May I interject here that in our charter, under the heading Duties and Responsibilities of the Town Manager, Item Number 01 is the Town Manager must uphold all the ordinances and laws of Simsbury. Now, there was so much testimony that the residents of our town had presented to you on this sale proposal. Also, there is the extensive due diligence of the Open Space Committee, which is our usual due diligence, had submitted to you as our responsibility in advising you in all things Open Space. And the fact that even after all the commentary that the public, at the public hearing or thereafter, it has all been not in favor for your approving such a sale. Not one resident has come forward and spoken for approval. Furthermore, the submission by the town manager and staff suggesting that the income from the sale would be several hundred dollars a year, when in truth it would be only $50 a year, and as for the sale price of $15,000 when the appraisal is $72,000. This is absurd and an absurd and dangerous precedent. I would like to share with you a fact. Former Chief Justice Barber of the Connecticut Supreme Court ruled in a case before them where a property owner seeking municipal approval by granting variances in order to maximize his parcel's value. The justice's response stated clearly, quote, "It is not the purpose of any municipal agency to act to increase the value of any singular property owner's property." I respectfully submit and request that the action for the sale be denied by you tonight. There's so much else I could discuss with you. But in the period of, uh, maybe?
Thirty seconds.
I hope that my comments have been helpful. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you, Helen.
Thanks, Helen.
The next person, Susan, want to come up?
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. In all of my times, I've come to the town meetings, various committees, et cetera. I just want to make it clear, my comments are never personal. It's always about the things I care about. You know, ethics, values, my kids, the land, that's it. I love to get along with people. I'm a friendly person. People know me from the Grange. I'm a tenured professor and I have the privilege of telling the truth without fearing for my job. And the reason why I'm here tonight is because the sale of this town piece of land, which is open space, has been fraught with a tumbling opening closet full of misinformation. And most of that has not been resolved or retracted. And it seems to be getting even worse tonight in that what is proposed tonight is that we put a conservation easement on this parcel, but the conservation easement will allow a fence, a shed, and an expansion of the house. Now, a conservation easement is a legal document that takes legal time to write and consider those legal details. So I just want to say, as a member of Open Space, I offered six, we, as my team, offered six alternatives to the idea that we are going to not have to mow the property, which was the impetus for selling the property, as well as economic development, which only because Open Space kept on asking, is how we found out, it was $50. So, this is, I've never heard of a conservation easement that the purpose of it is to allow someone a fence, a shed, and an expansion of their house. So who is going to do that work? And how is this possibly anything related to what was discussed before? What was voted on by Planning? What was voted on by Culture, Parks, and Rec? Any of the alternatives offered by Open Space? Or what was presented to you when this initially came up? So I'd like to also say that if you want to resolve this tonight, I suggest you either charge the person full price, because obviously they plan to make a significant economic improvement to their property. And why are we giving away our town land for $15,000 to give that person that huge economic advantage? Or just use one of our free leases that we use for our farmland, which is already available, which the Open Space spent a lot of volunteer time creating, and just let the person use it for the rest of their life. And then it would still be our asset and we could still have the opportunity to do something with it in the future. Or I had offered for the Grange to mow it, or we could make a little community garden, let the community decide what to do with it. But the idea we're doing a conservation easement to allow someone a fence, a shed, and a home expansion is really just mind-boggling. And it just adds to the idea that there's been no honest information about how this came about. There's been five stories. One was the person talked to Culture, Parks, and Rec. One was a person called George. One was a person called Planning and the Town Manager's Office, I guess in a parallel universe. And one was that they sent a written request to the town to buy the property, but that letter has never been provided despite me asking for it. So I don't know how this came about. It's a mystery. I don't know how the price was negotiated. That's also a mystery. I don't know why, after people asked about this extremely politely, there's an ordinance, we should be following it. We were all told we were wrong, go away. And then our names were disparaged among other town committees and commissions, saying that the Open Space Committee doesn't understand economic development. And I will just say that half of the Open Space Committee is expressly committed to economic development and the rest of us haven't even been queried. And as the person at Trinity College, who has brought the most money to the college and has had a continuously funded lab for over 20 years, I understand economics. And so I want to tell you that your main job is telling the truth. That's number one. Nothing good can happen if we don't tell the truth. Number two, stop creating false divisive narratives in our town, because that's harmful to us, and to our kids, and to our land, and to our water. And please start understanding that our land and our water are the foundation of everything, literally. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Susan. Joan?
Thank you. Joan Coe, 26 Woodcombe Drive. At the beginning of every board meeting, before public audience, First Selectman Wendy McStudis states that all remarks must be limited to five minutes. After the timer starts, Wendy's attention is spent looking at the time, totally uninterested in the person's comments or their point of view. First Selectman Wendy McStudis continually tells the audience that she is transparent, but we found out that most of the plows season discussed in a caucus prior to the meeting to curtail discussion on topics that affect the taxpayers of Simsbury. If First Selectman Wendy McStudis believes in transparency, she should list prior to the agenda items which ones are discussed in caucus for transparency that appears to be her mantra. At the March 10th, 2026 meeting, I remarked that the comfort dog was instituted with offer funds that has expired and this addition to the police department should be eliminated. This appears to be a public reaction fiasco leading to excessive expenditures that could be used for reducing overtime and adding an additional car to the police fleet. During the budget discussion, First Selectman Wendy McStudis stated that she will not vote to remove the comfort dog from the budget expenditures, because many police departments have comfort dogs. Where is the independent thoughts and original ideas that leadership should put forward? Just because everybody is doing it doesn't make it right. The Board of Selectmen does not question the need for a comfort dog when there are other expenditures with more value that were cut. The Simsbury taxpayers are not interested in what another town is doing, but what is appropriate for Simsbury. First Selectman Wendy McStudis has shown no leadership abilities with a stipend of $10,000. Now that the charter revision is reviewing the government, they should eliminate the first selectman from the charter and bring the town into a council manager form of government, eliminating the election of a first selectman and have the council choose a mayor without a stipend. The selection of priorities of the capital expenditure shows the lack of knowledge of the need to construct new tennis pickleball courts at the junior high with the expenditures of $650,000 in 2029 budget. The expense will cover the cost of concrete rebar courts with 25-year lifespan. The courts have received over the years the constant patching of the cracks until the courts have become dangerous with the coating bubbling and the gaps larger, leading the Simsbury High School tennis practice to use the tennis courts at Simsbury Farms, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 4:30. Since the high school's reserving the tennis courts, they should be paying for the use of the courts without any waivers in keeping with the reservation policy. Tennis pickleball courts at the junior high is a community court for recreation with everyone using it for recreation when not in use by the school. In the spirit of collaboration, the Board of Education, along with the town, should apply for grant to subsidize the cost of the courts as they are used for community recreation and in need of immediate repairs. When a person sustains serious injuries from a fall, from tripping on the cracks on the junior high courts, do they need a comfort door or an ambulance? And other policy approved by the Board of Selectmen, there's a waste of tax money deciding to replace the $450,000 offer approved project of pickleball court at the Tarble Park with an asphalt service for a quick fix instead of waiting for the DDP to approve the construction of the cement rebar courts in the floodplain. Dumping asphalt on the courts in a floodplain with no structure to stabilize the court will cause immediate buckling with cracks needing a fix continually. A rush to get courts ready due to political pressure is a waste of taxpayer money and will be a continual cost for maintenance instead of doing a cement rebar that will last for 25 years. Once again, Deputy First Selectman Steve Antonio has violated the zoning regulation. Deputy First Selectman Steve Antonio was given permission for a freestanding sign in his property. However, the freestanding sign was affixed to a permanent approved sign in violation of the zoning regulation. A painted sign on the outside of Antonio's restaurants and other zoning violations. Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio should not get a free pass to violate regulations approved by the town. And all of my comments we've posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
No one else has come yet? I'd like to participate in public audits.
As a resident?
As a resident, yes.
Okay, sure.
Anyone else?
That's legal.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, is anybody else here for public audience?
Oh.
Helen is here, someone else is here, Steve. I'll put you on the list.
No, that's fine.
Helen Gilbert, 126 Haberow Street, 3E. This topic's been on various agendas for a very long time. This is March, and we were talking about this many months ago. So I want to say that the things I said before, I really mean. I mean that I don't think that that little piece of property should be purchased by the neighbor and turned into lawn. Or, what I didn't know is what Sue said today, which I totally agree with what Sue said. You know, that if it's going to increase this property that much, then he should pay market price for that piece of property. And as far as the plant growth and where the birds and where the pollinators need to go to pollinate and perpetuate our wildlife and our plant life and our life and our water waste, I think that this was said in the very beginning. It was a test case. And we cannot forget that, that this is a small piece of property and the Grange is willing to take responsibility for it. And that would keep, keep Simsbury, Simsbury. But I still think that the Grange is a better option than selling it. And now I find out having a shed put on, a fence, and in addition to the house, uh-uh. So I would appreciate if people were able to look back at what I said before, because I meant it at that time and I mean it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to go as resident, Antonio? You have five minutes.
Trust me, I know. You can use my phone. I'm up here, Stephen Antonio, 133 Holcomb Street. As a resident, to be clear, not as a board member. I would never want to trample on anyone else's right to free speech. I also appreciate the Freedom of Information Act and the resulting transparency it provides. With this in mind, I'm going to speak out about the injustice of harassing our community members and our town staff who we pay with our tax dollars. I do my best to abide by all the rules of our town in doing business. We have been doing business in this town for over 60 years. Antonio's is a proud and active part of our community. Recently, I have come under fire from Joan Coe. She implies she does what she does for the benefit of our town, but I feel it is a much more sinister goal. Praise and appreciation are elusive for her to give. What she loves to cause others is strife and aggravation. How much time and tax dollars do we need to spend running around following up on irrelevant and unsubstantial claims repeatedly made by one single resident? I am proud of all the cost savings our board has created for our town. If Ms. Coe would like something to investigate, perhaps she can figure out how much time and money is actually costed to our town from her. I'm proud to say when I say gotcha, I mean I have your back. Not that I caught you on a technicality that has no tangible return in its discovery. Also, Joan has brought, Ms. Coe has brought a couple things to my attention. I have immediately acted and rectified when I found that I was outside this most recent barrage about a sign that says, "Call your mother." I immediately went to zoning regardless and made sure that I was doing the right thing. And I am. So just harassing me, which is literally what it is, could have been a phone call. Ms. Coe does call me on occasion and I respond. Even when the accusation is made publicly, I respond, not to her directly, but to the government agency. I just get frustrated with the amount of time and energy that could simply be done in a kinsman-type fashion about from fellow town residents from one to another as a small community, which we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Is there anyone else here for public?
Do you want to respond?
No, we don't have a response, but thank you. Respond at the next meeting if you'd like. So I am going to, oh, consent agenda. I'd like to ask for a motion for the consent agenda to move Action C, which is the taxes, and Appointments A, B, and C, which includes a new member of the Library Board, Heather. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I do want to announce, I'm doing my First Selectmen's report now. I do want to recognize our Public Works Director, Tom Roy, recently was awarded the top 10, one of the top 10. Who's the, are you the top one?
Same.
Top 10 Public Work Directors in North America. So we're thrilled to learn that he was awarded this recognition. The Board of Selectmen submitted a letter that I'm sharing through my First Selectmen's report. I think it's a little long to read. I don't know if everybody wants to hear it, but it's from the board. And it talks about all the things that Tom has done for the town, continues to do for the town, the snow pile ride-alongs, the touch-a-trucks, how much he did during the microburst this year, the issue that we had down at the Flower Bridge. He was right there to take care of that. He's helped with every cleanup day. He's been informing us on all the capital projects. And he is well-liked by everybody in town, as far as we know, right? Your commitment to public safety is unwavering and you just always play a critical role in every capital improvement project that comes to our board, and which includes Latimer Lane, the, what do you call it? The Performing Arts Center and soon the Flower Bridge, which will be completed. So I just want to say to close on this, I wrote, "On a last personal note, Tom Roy is approachable, smart, nice, funny, frugal, in a good way, and always willing to listen to our residents' concerns and address them with empathy and professionalism. He makes our job easier by being here for the residents and town staff. We are all very fortunate to have Tom here in Simsbury. His dedication, leadership, and commitment to our beloved town goes beyond what you would expect from a public works director. He is an ideal candidate for the Top 10 Leaders of the Year Award. Our community would be so proud to see Tom awarded this prestigious recognition that we feel he truly deserves, and it was signed by all members of the Board of Selectmen." So we're really excited that you just won.
I just want to thank you all for writing the letter, Mark, also for the support. It was really almost an emotional process to go through three weeks working with somebody who's putting together this package of everything I've ever done in my entire career. And it really made me proud of what I've been able to do in Simsbury, but more importantly, happy to disappoint my career events. And just really reflecting on, you know, as much of the project's been great, I think it's a lot more of it.
Well, that's good to hear. Did she want to say anything?
You said it all, chair. I'll catch him at the next budget meeting. Well done, sir.
So a couple other things. Our budget hearing is coming up on April 8th. I believe it's 5:45 in the Tarble Room at the library. The Board of Ed Chair, Jeff Tindall, and I will both present our budgets. And then the public will be able to speak and share their thoughts on it. And then the Board of Finance will be discussing it. I included the referendum questions on the potential ones in the packet, because they're included in our agenda tonight. And also, there'll be a mailer going out very soon. The postcard with the first mailer, right? A couple things, I just want to recognize Jen Aspenall, who has always been a happy, smiley face in the town clerk's office. She has recently accepted a job in Granby as their town clerk. I will be leaving Town Hall on March 28th, so please join me, wishing her well. The Hometown Hero Program is out till, how long is that up for, Tom? April?
Sorry, I think it is April 30th.
Okay, so if you know any hometown heroes, feel free to submit a recognition for them. I also received this, that, I'm not doing an ad. Jersey Mike's has a day of giving this Wednesday, March 26th, which is my wedding anniversary also, so I will buy Max. which is my wedding anniversary also, so I will buy max a sub for dinner. And, and the money's going to the Make-A-Wish Connecticut Foundation, so I wanted to mention that. Um, in public safety, it came up to remind people about the energy audits that Eversource puts out there, and I included the link there. Um, you may talk about that. And um, I think that's it. I will turn it over to Town Manager Mark Nelson.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, I want to thank you uh, for all your work again on the budget and, and as you said, that meeting, um, the public hearing is April 8th. But also for the public and those watching at home, we're going to try to do a better coordination between the First Selectmen and I so I don't repeat her, uh, her public service announcements and when we can, maybe, maybe not, although some of them I will be. But so quickly, uh, but very importantly, uh, from the PD. Uh, the Commission on Accreditation, and, and I want to just stress this, how important this is and how proud we are of PD and particularly Command. The Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, KLEA, reviews our Police Department compliance with national accreditation standards on an annual basis, um, either through a remote or um, in some cases, an onsite process. Every four years, an assessor visits the department here in Simsbury, conducts that onsite review. Um, in this case, KLEA Assessor Eric Kearns, uh, who's a retired Assistant Chief from Burlington, North Carolina, arrived in Simsbury on March 9th. And he was here with us, uh, reviewing our PD, uh, meeting with elected leaders, uh, with senior staff. Uh, and he was here through, through March 13th. Um, just a couple of points that came out of that. Assistant Chief Kearns conducted his review in uh, several specific areas through direct observation of the facility, here all day on those days. Uh, participated in activities and interviews. He tours the department, uh, he participated in ride-alongs. Uh, and he was able, fortunately, the, the timing worked out for him to see the Citizens Police Academy. Uh, he also interviewed a variety of the members uh, of the rank and file throughout the department. Uh, he met with members of the community. He had an opportunity to visit with the Police Commission. Uh, and uh, I had the privilege of meeting and chatting with him for about an hour. Really an interesting, an interesting guy. I want to thank him uh, for coming. During his exit interview with Command Staff, just Assistant Chief Kearns was very complimentary of the entire department. Uh, he stated, and I want to quote, "We have the right person in the right seat," end quote. He highlighted the department's community resources, particularly uh, the contacts um, uh, that they've established throughout the community as one of our strongest assets, he said. Uh, and I think we, we all agree with him. Uh, he informed the Command Staff that he found compliance uh, to be very good and strong throughout his entire review. Uh, and he'll be presenting the Board of Selectmen at my office with a written report. Um, I, I don't want to uh, get out in front of him on the time, but, but probably within the next month or so. Um, quickly, the library will hold an open house for the Innovators Workshop Makerspace. That's Saturday, April 5th, 11 to 2. Don't miss that, 11 to 2 on the 5th. Uh, the library's diversity, uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion Council and the Aging and Disability Commission uh, are collaborating and will host a Sweet Connections, intergenerational facilitated conversation program. Um, I believe that's Sunday, April 6th. Diana may speak more about that when, uh, when we get down to her. Uh, but these events at the library are, are really powerful and impactful and well-attended. Congratulations to our newest board member, to the library board. Uh, and for everything, uh, our thanks to the, to the entire library board. Uh, Community Planning and Development, this is important too. Sorry to take up some time, Chair, but on March 27th, which is Thursday at 6:30, uh, in the library, it is the Terrific Community Open House. Um, some of you on the board have inquired when that was going to be. And uh, we want to make sure you've got that on your calendar if you're free to attend. It's March 27th at 6:30. That Terriful Process, which everybody's familiar with, is uh, moving along uh, according to plan. And uh, thank you to George and his team. Um, Board of Finance, uh, as the Chair mentioned, uh, on March 11th, the Board of Finance set the public hearing for April 8th. Uh, please be there. Uh, and then I've been asked to mention quickly, uh, just to end, the Historical Society sent in a blurb. Uh, they say now with warmer weather approaching, the Historical Society has some great events. Um, this will all be posted, uh, and in my Town Manager Report, which is available on the town's website. Uh, but on April 3rd, from 7 to 8 p.m., join Central Connecticut State University Professor Ken Fetter at the library to talk about the Farmington River Archaeology Project and twelve thousand, twelve thousand years of native history. And also on May 3rd, from 10 a.m. to 3, uh, you can see live demonstrations over at the Historical Society and learn uh, firsthand about crafts and tools and trades of the past, uh, including blacksmithing, chair making, chair caning. I could take a lesson in that weaving, spinning, flax spinning, cooperage. I confess I'm not sure uh, about that, and timber framing. Thank you very much for the extra time and I, Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Budget tonight, so, well, a little bit.
I know, it's a full agenda, but it was kind of light last time.
Moving along.
And we don't have another meeting for, uh.
Yeah, so, yeah, until April 21st.
Got it.
Twenty, yes, 21st.
24?
21st.
Because of, well, it was moved because of vacation and stuff like that, it's cool.
Thank you, Chair.
And plus the hearing, so it's not like we're slacking.
Not slacking at all.
Um, so, so I'd like to get into Selectmen liaison and reports, and I'm going to start with Curtis.
Um, I, I only had a zoning meeting.
Okay.
And in that zoning meeting, um, it was brought up, and there, there's been a lot of conversation in town about the uh, proposal for Simsbury Commons.
Uh huh.
Um, just a, a, a conversation starter, so, uh, nothing's set in stone. Everyone's going to discuss how they could move forward with the property at Simsbury Commons. Um, I also wanted to say that I was able to do a ride-along with the citizens.
Oh, for your, for your um, Citizens Police Academy?
We didn't pull one person.
You did? Was it Steve?
No.
Sorry.
Nothing you could prove.
Let's tighten the stock.
Okay, thanks. Heather?
Um, yes, so for public safety, um, I attended the ambulance board meeting. Uh, their annual fund drive is underway, so hopefully you've all received um, donation slips in the mail. Uh, the current average response time um, is six minutes and thirty-three seconds. Call volume for February, there were two hundred and forty-three dispatches, two hundred and fifteen that the SVA, or for SVA responses, one hundred and forty-five transports, twenty-eight calls for mutual aid in and seventeen out. Uh, they also have a new black box safety system in their ambulances. Um, also at our public safety meeting, uh, FIRE reported that they um, have completed the investigation into 730 Hopmoto Street, so that is ready uh, to be demoed over there. Um, also, you mentioned the Eversource. Eversource and Social Services are encouraging um, our residents to, um, in need of energy assistance, to reach out and take advantage of the Home Energy Off, um, Audit. Also, uh, rates are going to change at the end of April, and everyone is encouraged to visit energiCT.com to check and change supplier rates. Also, um, the Social Services reported that the new food pantry at First Church is serving eighty-five households per month, which is great. DPW now has cameras in all vehicles. Uh, they are working with Ensign Bickford on pedestrian crossings and looking to reconfigure the Hoskins County Road Intersection due to many close calls. And, and that's what I have for public safety.
Thank you. I'm just going to do a quick personnel update. Um, we did bring the ethics nomination to personnel last week, didn't we? A week before, two weeks ago? Um, we will be reviewing the process for unaffiliated voters again and also the um, ethics applications, and we'll bring that back to the board when completed. Um, and the, as far as the comp and classification study goes, you know, wasn't, it wasn't, I guess, ideal. Um, but we are going to have a, a write-up on the, the pieces of it that we plan to implement from the town um, perspective that we can take advantage of, including the reclassification of positions to bring them up to current status, which is a huge piece. And um, on that, I'm going to pass it over to Steve.
Okay, on uh, Main Street and economic development, they are working in concert um, with the concern of the increase in office vacancies and a strategy to, to work against that. El Tapatio Mexican Restaurant, which I'm not sure if that's how you say it, so forgive me if I'm wrong, uh, it's now open in Simsbury Town Shops. The Lucky Gut Collective, which will be in the old Rue Spa, will be opening up shortly in Fiddler's Green. The Here Again Center, which was in, for many years in the um, the burned-down building, I don't know how better to explain it. Um, has relocated to the Cannon Building and will be moving to the old Caldwell Banker Building, which is the one right on Drake Hill Road, um, very soon. And last but not least, Made by Pam, which is a um, a bakery, will be opening in the former Cap Space near Antonio's in the North Village.
Peruvian Bakery, correct?
Yes, it is.
Very nice. And I do have to ask, what is the Lucky Gut Collective?
It's actually a consortium of different things. It's not only has a merchandising area that has several unique things you can buy, but they also have cooking classes.
Okay.
And it's like a workshop environment with multiple kitchens.
Okay.
It's a unique concept. It's a new concept.
I believe they work, uh, they, they focus on gluten-free and things that are holistic for um, healthy make choices.
That's the lucky gut.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, uh, thank you, Diane.
Um, Board of Ed, there's a meeting tomorrow, because the uh, previous one was canceled. And they are also canceling the uh, April 8th one because I believe it conflicts with
Budget.
Public, the public budget hearing. Um, so I will have more at our next meeting. Um, Aging and Disability, tomorrow, there is coffee with the Commissioner, and I will actually be there um, tomorrow from 11:30 to twelve, I have a, uh, 12:45 in the youth room at Eno, and there's also an additional one April 8th. Um, so anybody in the community can come by and have coffee with the Aging and Disability Commissioner. Um, as I said, I will be there tomorrow, and I can leave this out. Um, I'm also want to leave these with, with the Town Manager's Office. This is the Aging and Disability uh, Commission brochure. Um, and as you mentioned, uh, there is a Sweet Connections on April 6th at the library. In addition, uh, yesterday, yes, yesterday, I'm like, what day is it? Yesterday, um, there was a sensory-friendly movie showing uh, for people with disabilities at the library. They showed Inside Out 2, and it was very well-attended, and uh, people had a good time. For Culture Parks and Rec, April 4th will be the Flashlight Egg Hunt, which is always well-attended, where they uh, have hundreds of eggs that are out on the Simsbury Meadows lawn. And there's different uh, times for different age groups, and they go out and hunt for the eggs with flashlights. Um, they could use a few more volunteers to help put the eggs out and then make sure they're all found at the end. Um, and we will be doing a Community Cleanup Day, and I believe that date is still pending. Um, waiting on uh, the Toms to let me know when the Community Cleanup.
There, there was some concern whether we should do that the same day that the library has their sustainability.
Correct, so.
I think there was discussion.
Yes, we had looked at a date and then realized it can, it was the same day to the Sustainability Fair. Stay tuned, as soon as we have a Community Cleanup Day, I will be blasting that out. Um, Simsbury Met Performing Arts, April 14th, the HSO will be announcing their season. Um, and late April, SIMPAC will finish announcing the rest of the season. Um, but one thing to note is it is their twentieth anniversary this year, and they are doing a twentieth anniversary celebration concert, I believe it's in August. Um, Fair Rent Commission, there have been two fair rent complaints that have uh, come, come uh, to Kristen. Um, one is currently in negotiations with an informal conference, and one we just uh, received today, and they are reaching out for an informal conference. However, uh, if neither party agrees or either party disagrees with an informal conference, then we will have a public uh, fair rent hearing. Um, the, I don't have anything on Youth Services Advisory. And the only other thing I'm going to say, um, Heather did a great job on the public safety. Um, but there was two discussions, both from Public Works as well as from Eversource, to remind the community about work zone safety. And there's been some close calls, and when there are um, workmen out, whether it's for DPW or Eversource or any other uh, work, to please slow down in those work zones and remember work zone safety.
Thank you. Kevin?
Um, uh, congrats and thanks to the volunteers and the library books who volunteered their time and to the participants for the Human Library Event that was held at the library uh, this past weekend. And the DI Council for facilitating and coordinating, a hundred and fifty um, participants joined. Apparently, there were lines and, and waiting and, and um, some folks even checked out multiple uh, books and had conversations to learn about their neighbor. And I think that's a great um, engagement, um, activity and opportunity made available to the, um, to the public. Um, uh, thank you to the First Selectmen for um, uh, considering uh, next month to make an Autism Month proclamation. And then I hope that this board will favorably uh, consider um, uh, working with uh, the Town Manager and the Police Department on a training activity uh, to allow residents and officers to experience a traffic stop um, for somebody uh, with autism or family members, et cetera. That's uh, uh, something that can be available to us, I think, at least uh, to low cost, if not no cost. Um, and um, uh, April as Autism Month is an opportunity for us to, to take advantage of the month and to, um, to engage with the public in that way. Uh, inland, wetlands, and um, uh, conservation has held a, a, a very well-attended public hearing regarding the McLean's um, uh, residents and um, uh, that improvement. I think that they did a continuation uh, on that as well. And so there'll be more to follow, I'm sure, uh, as that moves through. That's all for me for now.
Thank you.
I will say that Kevin did reach out to me about um, the autism uh, proclamation, as well as um, the uh, program with the Police Department. Uh, not only as a liaison for the Aging and Disability Commission, but somebody who personally lives with an adult with autism and very involved with the autistic community. And the uh, Aging and Disability Commission uh, fully backs both of those, so.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Okay.
We'll toss this down to Mark.
Um, so we're going to move into Selectmen action. And the first item is the um, amending the town code. Um, but we just had the public hearing for that. Um, we have, we have two options to not approve it or to approve what, what it, what was presented. Given that this was a, I came to us in the budget and that it was pretty much um, agreed upon by the board to increase the fees. I just want to know, do you, do you guys have anything you want to add to it? Because I'm just going to move into the motion.
Just the July one, Chair, to remind.
I wrote it in. So let me, let me make sure I do this right. So um, I'm going to move effective today, March 24th, to amend Town Code Chapter 70, Building Construction, as presented, which will be effective on 7/1/2025. Correct? After publication in the newspaper, having circulation within the town of Simsbury. Because it says, uh, we, I cross out the effective 21 days after. So I probably.
Should work.
We don't need to even say the publication, do we?
Well, so the, the publication is there because normally when your ordinances are passed, it's just the 21 days after.
Okay.
Um, in the newspaper, but that should be, that should fly.
Okay.
If not, we'll come back to you.
Okay, so yeah.
There's one more sentence.
Oh, further, move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Uh, I, I, it's probably pedantic, as I usually am. Uh, it's, it's, uh, like, on or after? I just don't understand that, it's like the 21 days on or after July 1st, I, I think.
Where does it say that?
That's what I'm offering as a friendly amendment to just say on or after July 1st.
No, because it doesn't take effect until July 1st. That's why it's stipulated.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
Yeah, because we want.
It's, it's a budget.
Call it a question.
John, okay. Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Done? Uh, the next item is, um, so, so we have items here that were, came to us after we had, we had approved the budget. For the Board of Ed, CNR items, which are over and above the um, traditional payback of $550,000. Um, I, we, I know Jason's here to respond to some of the questions. I, I, I do want to, I don't know if you're going to come up and explain the projects to us, um, but I do have the question is from Mark and Jason as to why did we not get these before the Board of Selectmen approved our budget on March 3rd?
So I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to take that. Uh, the board didn't get them last year either, which as you know, was my first year. So I think there was, you know, just some confusion as to, you know, what, what the process would be. Um, I, 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 as I said in the email to the board, the Chair of the Board of Finance actually had to reach out to the town attorney to get clarification as to whether or not this board even needed to ratify the choices in first place. The answer that the town attorney gave was yes. But I, I think the answer to your question, Chair, is it just was some confusion. Uh, I take full responsibility for that, and we're here kind of at the 11th hour. But it's one of those things, as I said in the email, where the Board of Ed is actually the decision-maker with respect to, these are the projects that they put forward. And the Board of Finance is. These are the projects that they put forward and the Board of Finance is the ultimate authority with respect to approving the funding. And the role of the Board of Selectmen here is, is really to request that the Board of Finance review it. So what Chair Hevner, I think, was discussing with the Town Attorney and I wasn't part of that call, but I think the issue was. Can the Board of Finance act in the absence of a referral from this board? And the answer was no. So you're being asked to refer it. Um, it's analogous to uh, our capital planning where under state law, we, we seek an advisory opinion, if you will, from the planning. The Planning Board need not look at each individual um, proposal, uh, nor would it stand in the shoes of the Board of Selectmen. But yet we get, and I think one of the communications might even be on the agenda tonight, is, is that, is that same acquiescence. So I don't know if that answers your question. Hopefully it does.
Um, so, yeah, so my question is, A, is this an all or nothing proposition? And B, can we have explanations for each of these projects? Because there's nothing included in our packet to tell us the importance, the, the um, priority. And we actually did a ranking of all of our C N R items back in January, or later, last year.
December, I think, yeah.
And so we ranked them and technically, my understanding is these should also have been in the mix. Um, because it's all using the same funding, so we want to make sure these priorities are equal to or higher than ones that. Uh, in my opinion, that we've kind of tabled for next year. Um, that, that's how I look at it. I don't know if others look at it that way, but.
I think that's the, that's the elephant in the room is the clarity with which, i- i- you know, it wasn't clear to me that the Board of Selectmen stood in the, in the position of an approving body with, with respect to looking at the individual proposals that were ratified by the Board of Education. Uh, it's, it's your role to, I, I guess I'll just answer the question as best I can. My personal view is that you, you take the total package and recommend it or not. Um, again, the Charter isn't clear on that. The Town Attorney opined that uh, you know, the Board of Finance couldn't act without your referral. But, so, uh, Jason is here to answer any questions and certainly we want to be, um, you know, provide as much information as we can. That isn't the issue. It's just a question of whether, I really don't know whether you've got to uh, look at each individual item. But certainly Jason can answer any questions that you have.
I have a question. Um, you said this is the second time it's happened? Like, it's happened last year, now this year?
I think there was some confusion. Again, I, 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 I guess, you know, let me put it this way and, and I'm, I, I don't want to overstep. I think that there's been confusion about the use of the so-called traditional payback method to fund C N R. And I think that in the absence of clarity around that, and I, I think we're gonna get clarity over the summer months, which we're very appreciative of. You know, the boards have to decide to recommend to the Board of Finance that we use more reserves to fund C N R. Uh, and when that's the case, then the Charter kicks in and says, that's the Board of Finance's purview, but they can only act if you ask them to. The choices though, uh, of C N R projects is, is my interpretation is that it rests with the Board of Education. So to answer your question, we did an exercise back in December and January with the board where everybody helped rank our capital projects. But I did not include the Board of Ed projects because I thought that was overstepping. And I only asked the board to rank municipal projects. So we are here because of that decision that I made. I take full responsibility for it. When the Chair of the Board of Finance talked to the Town Attorney though, that question wasn't asked or answered. What was asked was, can we, I think, can we act in the absence of a referral from you and the answer is no. But we didn't get an answer as to whether we should have ranked everything together, you know?
Yeah. Well, cause like we do that with C I P, so it's.
Well, we hadn't ranked C I P in that.
No, but I, but I'm saying we look at, the, the question is, we always look at C I P for both Board of Ed and Town because the Board of Selectmen is responsible for capital.
Right.
Right, so, um, so I don't know what questions the board would like to.
So just the, the reason I ask the question is because it's happened twice.
Yeah.
And um, we haven't done anything to correct that. Um, and then this is also being like, we've gone through all steps to get the, the budget appro- approved by the boards. Um, could this have come up earlier so that it's not the date, I think, before?
Yeah, I would, I, I, e- e- everything is, is, can always be done earlier. I, I, I would just say this in, in deference to our friends at the Board of Ed. Um, we, we did a tremendous job collaborating on the C I P piece and admittedly the C N R, w- w- not so much. But with the Board of Ed uh, and, and the municipal side, w- w- the C I P number was significantly lower. Well under what the Board of Finance said we could do. There was a lot of collaboration about capital. Uh, but it was not my opinion that we needed to get the Board of Selectmen involved on, on scoring the C N R. So that was entirely my, uh, my miss and, and we'll, we'll try to fix that for next year.
Yeah, oh, Diana, sorry.
I, I'm gonna go on record to say that um, in looking at this, it, 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 it really, it makes me uncomfortable because there are items on here which seem like nice to haves. And there were items in our own C N R that didn't make our cut, which would rank much higher than some of these items. And when we are looking at such a tight budget and we had to nickel and dime cuts, we're looking at, we looked at the Police Department. We looked at Public Works, we looked at the library, you know, and to, for some of these nice to haves. When we can't seem to fund curtains at Eno and we can't seem to fund furniture at the library. But, you know, wifi at the boathouse is a nice to have and it really, I, I, I cannot in good conscience. Um, support something like that when we have things that, that will benefit the entirety of the community rather than a small percentage where that would be benefiting.
Well, if, if I could respond.
I was gonna let Jason.
Well.
I could speak to the wifi at the boathouse.
Sure.
That's an area that has no cell coverage and it, this is looking to solve both the issue of emergency response as well as they've asked for security camera coverage from the P D, the way the schools can monitor the security cameras. So those are the two reasons.
So it becomes like a public safety, safety issue for, uh, uh, the, you know, people that are there. Now, when you say boathouse, is that, um, because that would then potentially be wifi available for public safety and cameras for any boater utilizing the.
This is crew. This is.
This is just for crew. I mean, we want to keep crew safe. Don't get me wrong. We want to keep students safe. I will go on record and say we want to keep students safe.
Yeah, but we, we have no, again, normally for our C N R projects, we need somebody to present a plan, why the cost is forty thousand dollars. You know, there's nothing. We have nothing.
I have a question as well. So I see there are a lot of squadron line repairs. Um, and I'm just curious, I guess, what the long-term plan is for the schools? Because I was under the impression that Squadron was one of the next schools that really needs a full, I don't know if it needs a new school, but um. I thought that.
Yeah, we are still looking at uh, potential renovations for that building. But in terms of the, the initial dollars that we're seeing, it doesn't look like this is going to happen within, say, the next five to ten years. Potentially, given the, given the costs and the, things like bathroom facilities are in very tough shape.
I got a question for Tom. So W P C A, do they have wifi? Cause they're next to the boathouse.
They're, apparently they're connected on our fiber system.
They are. I had a conversation. Um, there was somewhat of a Homeland Security question about uh, with what that facility is used for, opening up the wifi to a public audience. Um, it, it, it was a non-starter.
I, I have a follow-up question on the wifi, not to dwell on it, but I believe Main Street is still in the formative stages. But getting uh, downtown wifi, which would be centered on the Performing Arts Center as the primary goal firsthand. And would this not be close enough to that, that we would reap the benefits of wifi in, in that instance? Cause that's on the shortlist, I think, isn't it?
It is.
Um, depends on the cost.
Probably not for cameras and security systems.
Right, right, yeah. Right now, the target area in working with Main Street is gonna be, the farthest distance to the east is gonna be the Performing Arts Center. So it would be relying on spillover, but that's not the core box that they're looking at.
Okay, and not to be stupid, but is Frontier um, fiber optic available? Cause it's a very cost-effective solution that you can put wifi in for pennies compared to this.
We're looking at a couple of different um, fiber options to, to merge into the existing school network. Um, and additionally, also looking at antenna-based systems as well. Uh, we may have a, there's a couple of different ways that we're going with this, but they're all roughly in that ballpark of dollars.
This is more than, more than just wifi. It's the cameras as well.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that.
Right, so that's, that would be good, again, that's where good information would be, that would be really good for us to know when we get this list. You know, as we look at our C N R, we have explanations from departments. Um, you know, cause it looks on paper like a nice to have. But when, you know, thank you for coming and explaining that, well, yes, security cameras, that makes a big difference.
So, so I benefit from hearing on each one of the line items. We've already started on the boathouse wifi and maybe there's more questions, but we, we have the opportunity here now and I share the same concerns as everybody else here, but it's just hard for me to be upset about it. But knowing that he could probably answer the question.
Yeah, so Jason, can you present each project and give us background on them and rationale and priority?
Okay.
Well, I thought that was why.
Yeah, well, I was asked, asked, asked to show up to answer questions. Um, initially, as, as Mark mentioned. Um, the budget was set for its, its traditional five hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollar C N R allocation that we've had historically. It was sort of late in the game that uh, I believe it was through conversations with Superintendent Board of Finance that they were interested in looking at the things that we cut out to make the five hundred and fifty thousand work. And then that's, that's sort of the timing behind all of this was. Um, I think a, an ability to finance further than the five hundred and fifty was, was believed to be true. Um, so yeah, I, I can speak to each of them. I didn't really uh, come prepared with a presentation, you're saying.
Let's start asking questions and go in order.
I also have, um, so I think. In earlier years, I believe, when we used to do the budget workshops, the Board of Ed would present the C N R projects to us, if I recall correctly. So this is all just a change in the past two years, correct?
I didn't know that and I, I, I never saw that, so. Um.
So I'm just trying to best understand, um, I think we need to figure out what the new process is because, um. You know, are we just referring this and letting the Board of Finance answer these questions and that's the new process and they are sort of figuring that out? Or is this part of ours where we should be asking these questions?
If, if, if I can back up a minute. With, with C I P, we were given clear guidance by the Board of Finance that we could only bond a maximum of ten million every two years. We got that guidance early and often. And we hit that home run with your help, Board of Ed's help, no problems. With C N R, we got no guidance. Not early and not often. And there were protestations about needing to uh, have conversations around that that were met with essentially not, not gonna happen, not gonna happen, can't happen, can't happen. And then late in the process, it did happen. That is completely, respectfully, it's unfair to staff here. It's unfair to the Board of Ed. Had, had it all been carved out, I don't think we would be here with a list of newly potentially funded items. So I wanted to get that clear. I think we need to get our arms around uh, C N R and what that process is going to be. Because there's great clarity around operations, great clarity around C I P, but this middle category, which as we've said, the Board of Ed historically gets five hundred. Municipal gets four hundred. Last year, municipal got a million. Uh, I don't know what the Board of Ed got. But, but I don't recall that there was anything presented to the Board of Selectmen last year at all. And so I was new. I didn't know. I still didn't know. Uh, and, and obviously there was some lack of clarity. If, if, if the Chair of the Board of Finance had to check with the Town Attorney as to whether this was even needed in the first place. So the question still unanswered is, you know, if the Board of Ed, I assumed, Justin, that the Board of Ed, Jason, did, did approve these?
Yes.
Okay, so if the Board of Ed acted to approve them, I wasn't under the impression that, that it would then be a Board of Selectmen line-by-line approval. Followed by a Board of Finance. There's no other case in the Charter I know of where all three boards would do it. So you're, you sit in over the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance sits over the Board of Selectmen? I, I just didn't follow, right? So, I don't.
So, yes.
How time sensitive is this?
Yeah, that's what I, so I was, I was gonna ask.
I think the Board of Finance can't act unless you refer it favorably.
So here's a couple of things. Um, first of all.
And I'm sorry if I'm not as clear as I want to be on this, but.
So there's, I'm gonna say a couple of things. When we, when we did our budget on the, the third and we allocated the eight hundred and something extra out of reserves. We discussed how next year we would have less surplus and that we didn't prioritize or look at all of the C N R items for twenty-seven so that it was in the best interest to leave a hefty balance there so that we could do all that next year, which is what we did. Now, this is telling us, we want another eight hundred thousand dollars out of that and may, it may or may not make a difference next year. But we, the, the, the discussions were, we don't know what will happen next year. Um, we've also, I, I know I've said this before and then make it y'all, but we did, we did spend a million dollars out of reserves for a big Board of Ed priority project this year that we also prioritize, which to me could be in lieu of this eight hundred thousand dollars. So a couple of things we could do, and I don't know the timing is, because we don't have information on these and in my opinion, they should be uh, in clear GOV with all of our C N R projects so that the public can see what they are. Do we table this and we let the people speak up the public hearing on April eighth and let the Board of Ed address these projects? Because we haven't voted on them yet. And then see what the public thinks and let the, see what the Board of Finance thinks. And then we'll have to take it back up if it has to come back to us.
Insofar as process, can the Board of Finance hear it at the public hearing if we haven't referred it?
I.
I don't believe so.
Okay, so then, uh.
Wayne, is it possible for us to pass it with the understanding that it will come back to us after the Board of Finance?
It won't come back to us.
Won't come back.
We can't put those stipulations on it.
So.
Not unless they kick stuff back to us.
Huh? Yeah, they, they have kicked stuff back to us, but in this case.
We can't put that condition.
Okay, so I'm gonna just, I, I'm just gonna call a motion then.
Well, you could put a condition on it, Steve. I respectfully, I think I could, like any other motion, you could, if there was.
Do we want it back to us? We, how many times are we gonna?
It, well.
I was just saying that if we, if we, if they come back and they say, we approve all this, we can then say, we don't. Or, just because, like, right now, they can, we don't know that Finance is gonna approve this.
Well.
They might look at it and say, it doesn't make sense.
I don't feel comfortable voting on this until I know what these things are. I don't know, I understand the words, stage curtains and dual mic kit. I would just like to hear a three-sentence. And I know that he can do it. I don't, I understand you don't have a full presentation prepared and I'm not asking for that, but I, I would just like to know. So the old ones are in tatters and it's a huge fire risk, putting words in your mouth. I just, I want to know that so that when I'm asked by the public and I, I couldn't pass this and I would feel bad voting against it, which I'll have to do unless I know what these things are.
And there was also a difference in what we were originally given uh, for the cost of that versus what is now in the packet.
So here's the, here's what I think is the only solution. If we, we would, it sounds like we wouldn't be inclined to move this forward as a whole. And I think we take the risk of potentially tabling it and seeing if there's a course of action to get these through. Otherwise, I'll call the vote. I, I mean, I don't see any other way around this.
Well, respectfully, Chair, can we please give, uh, to Selectman Beal's point, let's give him that opportunity to.
Jason had more to bring in, okay.
Jason, can you run through a, a, a blurb on each one?
Uh, are you interested in just ones over the five hundred and fifty thousand or are we looking at the entire C N R?
No, just the.
Whatever I have to vote on.
So yes, just the one.
Over fifty, five, over five fifty.
The new item.
That's all that we have.
So yeah, um, to your point about the stage curtains, they're the original from the, from the nineteen sixties. It's ratty and the audio has been a problem, so it's just been a, a traditional uh, sore spot when we bring parents in to do those types of presentations.
Okay.
Again, so is Eno.
So I know Squadron, cause my daughters go there. Uh, what's the walk-off carpet?
Yeah, what is that?
Uh, it's carpeting at, at uh, junctures, at stair points where the, where we're getting into trip hazards and we're just looking to uh, keep moving forward with getting rid of any.
The big ramps, that's what this is? Because those don't have carpeting anymore, right?
No, 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 this is um, yeah, it's, it's areas at the intersections.
Okay.
And then additionally with with squadron, there's some bathroom work that we wanna do there. Um, especially the upstairs bathrooms are in are in significantly bad shape. Uh, the phone systems at both squadron line and Tooton are the oldest in the district and we're having significant problems, uh, keeping those running properly.
Is it, do you have a voice system for the system phones, what's what is it used for the phone systems?
Um, right now, these are, these are old, um, uh, what were they? Viacomagic systems, so really old, um, uh. But, yeah, at the at the rest of the schools, we have an N E C fiber backed, uh, uh, setup that we wanna move to.
And so this would go to that?
Yes. Uh, let's see, at Henry James, it's more bathroom work. And then, oh, that, um.
High school front sign, right?
Yeah, the the high school front sign is some masonry work, uh, just that's starting to show its age as well, that's probably the the, um, the most in line with a nice to have on this on this list. And then, uh, we wanna stay on track with our school buses, so the largest item is is replacing two more of the diesel buses with propane buses. We've tried to stay on a ten year schedule, but these are now running into the fourteenth year.
Thank you.
Is, just a quick question, but I I know we brought this up before, there were questions originally about the non lapsing funds. We thought we were gonna, it was a half a million that was a extra, that we thought we were gonna lose that, is that the five hundred is still available now in the non lapsing fund?
The traditional five fifty is still there as to how, uh, as to why I was asked to, uh, bring this forward and just late in the game, I don't know what additional funds they were looking at.
Okay, um, uh, so I'm gonna a- ask for a motion effective March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to add the proposed board of education projects as presented to the board of selectmen through capital non recurring plan and further move to recommend these projects to be funded through the capital reserve fund.
So moved.
What seconded to keep?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the twenty five thousand dollars for the high school front sign light.
We voted? I thought we could, we could, itemized.
I would second that.
I think we can do line item. I think I think you, i- if the board is so inclined, you can, I just can't speak for the town attorney, I think. You know, the purpose isn't clear, our interpretation at the staff level, non attorney level is that it's it's all or nothing. But I'm not a lawyer, I think, you know, to tell a board that sits in this position that it can't exercise line item, I don't wanna do that. So I would recommend that the motion, um, be be, uh, voted on as as it was presented and whatever changes need to be made before you send it to the board of finance, I think that that's what I would recommend.
Believe the board of finance can.
They could always put it back.
Fade away if we ask. But anyway, so are you gonna pull that out, pull that back?
Uh, unless you rule it's not, uh, in order, uh, in my motion.
Well, I'm being told it's not in order, aren't I?
No.
No.
Oh, okay, so sure, you, so.
I second it.
Okay, so, um, any further, there was your discussion to to take out the.
That was his amendment to the motion, yes.
The front, front, so it's all seconded, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's four, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, passes, okay.
We know that the board of finance will be reviewing it and could potentially deny.
They could, actually, yeah, so, anyway.
Can we now? No, no.
Okay, so, um, let's move on. Okay, but authorize, okay. Um, the next item is authorize the town manager to apply for a C T D O T active transportation micro grant. Try to get to that one, oh, is it Tom, is it Tom, wanna talk about this one?
Oh, this is easy, uh, micro grant, um, it's actually about five thousand dollars, it's a rolling application. Uh, it basically allows us to add some existing bike racks to this facility in Eno. And then we're also gonna put a bicycle repair station in front of public works where we see a lot of cyclists. The bike racks would go here, we're gonna put them here anyway, so it just really saves us from funding them out of our operator, our capital budget. Um, it's part of the landscaping work, it's finishing up the facility improvements associated with park lot. Um, Eno currently doesn't have a bike rack, so we would be adding two small bike racks there. And the bicycle repair facility is similar to what we have down near Roadwood Park, which would have a, um, and the ability for somebody to do basic bike, bike, etc. Goodbye.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this item?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, so, um, ask asking for a motion effective March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to submit an active transportation micro grant application to the Connecticut D O T and authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute the grant application, further move to accept the grant if awarded and authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute all documents related to the grant award and finally move to appropriate the grants funds if awarded and recommend said appropriation to the board of finance.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, so next up is the proposed sale of town on property located at the corner of Fire Town Road and Owens Brook Boulevard, uh, we've talked about this since August, I believe. Uh, I did wanna clarify one thing that was said earlier, this conservation easement. Um, so if I read this correctly, that means that the person can do fencing, a shed and expansion of the current home? I've never understood that part of this.
It is, uh, you can't do anything except the exclusions that are there.
Okay.
Uh, he had expressed an interest in doing the shed and the fence. And, uh, he's asked me as of yesterday to let the board know, he's appreciative of your fair consideration and, uh, is totally happy with there not being an exclusion to, uh, expanding the primary residence. When when we first had discussions, we needed to be clear that he wasn't contemplating a an outbuilding or an outstructure or an A D U or anything else. Um, and, uh, he's confirmed that that, uh, if it's the board's pleasure to amend the motion uh, and and the board would feel more comfortable, uh, not excluding that then he's happy to continue the transaction, so he has no intent, uh, to, um, expand the primary residence. I think that grew out of, um, my office asking the town attorney to craft the restrictive covenant, so.
When when would we see the restrictive covenant if this were to pass? We, because we've only heard.
If the board passes it, you're authorizing the town manager to work with the town attorney to to, uh, to to do the transaction exactly as you authorize it to do. The deed would not come back to you for another approval, but I would put it in as a communication, of course. The town attorney is gonna follow the directions of this board with respect to the language. The ability to add the restrictive covenant is at the heart of the matter. Because if the deed was restricted in the first place, we wouldn't be here. And one of the things that has really come to light of this, and there were problems on both sides, but if if it all boils down to one thing, it's that we need to, with our partners at open space, go through properties and and ascertain what needs to be property deed restricted and what doesn't. That's not an effort that's been undertaken, to the best of my knowledge, over the last, uh, dozen or so years. But the addition of the restrictive covenant flows with the land for all time, and the only body that can remove it is this board. So I will give you an example from Poughkeepsie, a restrictive covenant was placed on the former Y M C A building. Uh, and when Y M C A vacated the building and it became a blighted building in downtown Poughkeepsie for, you know, fifteen years, plans to to renovate it were subject to the deed restriction and the deed restriction made it that you can only use it for, you know, educational and so on purposes, and it survives to this day because it cannot be changed. In fact, in New York, you need a super majority, I don't know if that's the case here. But, you know, if if this board approves it with a deed restriction, that's it. It can't be undone, uh, you know, as easily as, and that's the whole point. If section twenty one oh eight only applies to open space, which is what the town attorney says, and it doesn't define open space, uh, and it doesn't list the properties that are considered open space, then you're really left with a framework of absolutely nothing to protect all the other properties. So the real issue is not just this sliver lot, respectfully, but what steps does the town need to take to actually protect the properties that it thought were protected all this time by a twelve year old draft that says on page two, not for use in in decision making?
Yeah, and, uh, we've talked through that, that was a lot of work by the prior, or the open space commission. It wasn't rubber stamped, but that is something that we plan to have open space work on. But I find that I, the work was still done in the in the vein and
Spirit, yeah.
Thought it was meant to be done in, so I I I I'm going to just read, ask for the motion. Um, uh, mo- move effective March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to approve the sale of a point three six acre parcel located at the northwest intersection of Fire Town Road and Owens Brook Boulevard identified as tax map number F zero seven, block one oh seven, parcel zero sixty two with the unique town identifier of oh four zero one four nine one six. The sale parcel to Mr. Joseph Dinofo of two fifteen, he's he's not, he's not here either, I was just mentioning. Um, to Mr. Joseph Dinofalo of two fifteen Fire Town Road is the purchaser contingent on the merger of the sale parcel and the purchaser's adjacent parcel, the placing of a conservation restriction on the sale parcel that prohibits the development of or the placement of structures of any kind excluding fencing, a shed and expansion of current home on the sale parcel.
So moved, keep it moving.
Also, I get in for comment?
Is there any discussion?
I've got some.
I've got some too.
I think we all do.
I think we all do.
But, uh, I'll be fully transparent that the only other time this occurred was me, so I'm gonna speak out about it. Um, I did have a orphan lot within all my other property, it was less than an acre, I think it might have been one point oh six acres. I wanted the town to give me that parcel stripped of any ability to do anything and we were told at that time, when I say we, I mean my family and I, that they couldn't figure out how to do the conservation easement. And they said, but just take it, and I took it, I don't agree with that. If we are gonna convey parcels, they need to be conveyed, and I'm using quotes here because I mean it as quotes, open space. And that has to be maintained. I wholeheartedly wanted that parcel and appreciate that the town, Simsbury worked with me to give me, not give me, they sold it to me for full market value, I might add, which I was agreeable to. And I will keep it maintained even though there's no conservation easement. We have still not received a conservation easement in its entirety, and I'll be honest, I was a little shocked to see the shed and the expansion of current home on the sale parcel. I am for this if, big if there, it's stripped of everything, you can't do anything, you can have the property and you maintain it as open space for the town. It's got sightlines for the stop sign and, you know, it just, um, I I would, I, I'll be honest, the first time I read that, I read that in reverse, I thought it said including fencing, a shed, and then Susan said, I said, oh, she doesn't know what she's talking about, and then I read it again just now, and it was a little bit of a shock that she read correctly and I read it incorrectly, so.
That sounds consistent to me, Stephen, just for the record.
Um, I'm for the sale if it can be conveyed stripped of all development rights in its entirety.
Stephen, would you be acceptable, just again, I'll get between, you're only one vote, but would the fence be acceptable?
No.
Oh, um, for me personally, and not for Wendy, first of all.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If it was for me personally, some sort of transparent fencing, perhaps split reel is what I'm thinking, cause chain link definitely is a no.
I think we can put it.
But with that being said, a slap fence, which I know in a parcel in a different community, they did this and the new owner immediately put up slap fence, in which I mean six feet high boards, and ultimately the town, it became a a debacle, uh, is where I'll go with that. And I just would, wouldn't even want to convey that that might be okay, that's not okay. If it was something split reel, like a two reel split reel, I'm working to work with someone. But otherwise, what we have now, I don't wanna detract from, if we can convey and maintain, I'm all in. If we have to convey and detract, then I'm all out.
Well, as I answered the earlier question, I would say that the that the board has it in its discretion to amend any motion it wants to. And 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 if you authorize it on whatever terms you authorize it on, we're only closing subject to your conditions, so go ahead and and make whatever amendments you're you're comfortable with, I would just say, and I'm not a planner, I think the 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 current owner could put a shed on his current property. So putting it ten feet further, you know, isn't isn't necessarily the 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 worst thing, so I understand removing, and I spoke with him myself yesterday, um, expecting trepidation about that provision that Bob D put in about the, by expanding the residence, because I, but just as you did, that that's not what was really, why even, you know, include it? But with respect to the shed, you know, I'm not sure that that would be a burdensome add which, you know, he could put on his property as it stands right now, so to move it ten feet over, it wouldn't necessarily be the worst thing. But I would just recommend the board make whatever motion it's comfortable with. Um, again, the bigger issue for us on the on the staff side is is, uh, trying to clean up the 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 issues that I mentioned, uh, twenty one oh eight, uh, twenty one eight needs to be amended, things like that.
My concern is, as Wendy, um, pointed out, is the work was done and by open space, and we have other parcels that we now have in a document. Um, and I, I would prefer, um, that the work that was done by open space and continues to be done by open space, and if they are, if if they are going to be tasked with additional work, that the initial, um, document and proposal and we create policy around and ratify it.
Oh, I couldn't agree more, I would just point out, Diana, respectfully, that that document itself, uh, I I think on page ninety eight, and I sent this to Stephen the other day by email, specifically carves this and a a three or four others out and says these parcels don't fall into any of the categories that we've, so they created the very good piece of work that put the properties into various segments to identify their potential use for the public or the benefit to the public.
Right, I saw, I read that in that document.
But somehow at the end, and I think that they were right to do this, these properties don't fit into that nice niche, so they're they're ex, the I don't wanna put words in their mouth, they they did this twelve years ago, but these properties don't fit into their own standards, right? So I would exclude these, and, you know, obviously, we recommend that this transaction be approved. The others, I think we need to talk to open space about what is the, what what is the new attempt? And maybe things have changed over the last twelve years, uh, and then I would say, let's deed restrict them. To Stephen's point about his transaction, I would just offer on behalf of the town, Steve, we would be happy to add a restrictive covenant to the land and let's, let's hold your feet to the fire now, if if you wanna do, no reason why a property owner can't add a restrictive covenant after the fact, okay?
He could surrender that at his own volition at any time.
He can.
I think that Curtis had a question, Kevin had a question?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I mean, I I just wanted to say, one, that appreciate everyone that's come out for this, um, if we've heard all, you, I mean, we've had multiple about multiple, um, this is what, this is what government's supposed to be, is, um, the citizens coming in and giving their their expression of of their feelings about it. Um, I do feel as though this one project has become more of a process than it is the actual, the actual space. I understand that it could be a preliminary pa- pathway or be be given to the Grange. Um, but I I think this is a a fellow citizen in this, in in this town who just wants to have additional space, and if if he's gonna maintain it, um, you know, let's, I I I am for him being able to maintain it, um, with the restrictions that we're placing on it, um.
And selectmen, let me be very clear for the record, that we did not approach this individual or any other individual. It's been said that that the the story's changed. The individual went to planning, was referred to the town manager's office, within a week, we called the town attorney and got the practice, got got the opinion and we followed what we thought was the process. It 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 changed when the first selectman correctly said, let's follow the open space project, uh, process anyway. Um, but I would just say, before you vote, that we in my office followed the process as the town attorney described it. Uh, because in that email of August, whatever it was, he said it's not designated open space, and so I think my office was right to respond to a citizen request. We're gonna make a decision for this board and say to him, sorry, can't do it, we brought it forward. Uh, we asked the town attorney for advice, we've made a recommendation and we've tried our best to to. We've made a recommendation and we've tried our best to to answer the questions. And I think this board has has got all the information in front of it to make an informed decision.
I totally understand. I I think there was just there was confusion.
Yeah, yep.
Technology confusion.
I own it.
That led to um something probably becoming a larger issue than.
Yeah. And just one more thing, twenty one eight, while it needs to be amended to define open space and maybe attach the list to Diana's point. The other thing is twenty one eight doesn't say that the town should notify the adjacent property owners before sale. It talks through all the things that need to happen before sale, but it misses the one that Wendy brought, you know, forward, that we need to do a better job of making sure that everybody around is noticed.
So just to co- comment on that, open space does have a full questionnaire that they use when they're doing the referral to this board to go through all those questions, and those questions are all in there. They have a lot of questions in there.
If if it's open space and it goes to open space, then you're right. But if it's not open space, it never goes.
Okay, but this did go to open space. So that these were questions that all came up, and the neighbor actually did come to open space and then changed his position. Um so the last person.
Sorry, I wasn't like, just the one thing to go with that is um also in zoning, so zoning, um so I I had a uh we're we had to get a better variance on our house because of we're doing additions.
Setback.
Uh setback. So um my neighbor who was living cold, I guess, further down the street from me. So we posted our sign saying we're doing this adjustment, but they never came down the street to see it. So zoning has addressed that that issue, whereas
Now it's certified.
You have to do with it, I I forget the uh two hundred yards. Uh of budding properties that they have to be notified, so.
Well, what we're what what we're gonna do now, this is policy, and this board could codify it if you amend twenty one eight and 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 do it that way would be even better. But we are gonna send certified notices now. We've heard from from people in public conduct, just like you have, that there wasn't adequate notice and that the process wasn't right from the very beginning, and we totally understand that.
Um so Kevin wa- is the last person, I I think we need to move on.
I just wanna point out something in the letter that he sent us, though. Um it he does say, I have no intent or desire to build on this land or alter it. So I don't find any reason why this exclusion should be in there at all, including fence. He said, I'm committed to maintaining, I would actually want to further pretty it up. But he very clearly says, I have no intent or desire to build on this land or alter it.
I think that my response to that, Diana, would be a- absolutely right, and and he made a point, as I said before, of taking out the uh addition to his house. But in the event this owner sells, the deed restriction follows the land, so you could have three owners down the road. And so I think it's for this board to decide a- about the shed, notwithstanding his willingness. He may not wanna put a shed there, but you know, someone else might wanna put a shed that's just over the line.
So the motion's on the table as written. Kevin, you're you're the last person to speak, although you're one of them.
We we talked a little bit about setback, and I I think that's another part of this discussion regarding whether or not the covenant or this um uh conservation restriction would allow him to build anything on this other parcel, a previous non-conforming parcel, once it's joined with the other property. It may um expand his setback requirements and allow him to do other things on his current lot closer to that border uh without having to build on that property itself. And I I think that that has um a potential value for him. If we do place these restrictions on the covenant, which we're in some of our earliest discussions about this and putting some uh building restrictions on this, which um maybe not um expressly maintains open space, but in the spirit of the open space in the in the town, makes it not dense. Um you know, protects the community's interest in that respect, and maybe more strongly if it is a covenant. Or this um deed restriction, and it's my understanding too, that the deed restriction itself, if we were to put it just as a conveyance versus um the conservation restriction, that that gives us standing to enforce it versus another uh similar deed restriction that you might put that's not a conservation restriction. So if a future property owner wanted to put something on a property, um we would have standing to en- enforce it. So I think that that um uh is something for us to consider if we if we go through with this. The final point, because of the restrictions, I think that um adjusts the value of that parcel itself as well. So while we've been talking about what the appropriate pricing for this is and um that process as well, I don't feel qualified to be able to say what the price is. But I don't think that it is necessarily what would be otherwise considered full price if you could build on it. Um because in this case, we're conveying it in a in a circumstance that would not um allow it to be um built on. However, I'll also say that I don't um feel a sense of urgency on doing this right now either. I understand that the property owner wants to do it. Um but I know that the community has concern about it. I don't think that the substantive difference or putting this through um will be something that uh we we long remember. Sense of urgency to take action on it immediately. That's all for me.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the vote on it.
Well, I'll make a motion to table the uh the motion.
Second.
Well, so now we're gonna have to bring it back next month again.
No, I I'd table it seen A D A without a date.
Well, if we okay.
So that just sits out there until we decide to bring it back?
What we were gonna do, but it's on the agenda tonight. Um what are we tape, look, I guess I just wanna know if we voted it, well, the the motion to table is theirs now.
Right. Now we have to vote on the motion to table. We can turn down the motion to table.
If we turn down the motion to table.
Then we have to vote on it.
Okay. We should vote on it at this point. What are we what are we waiting for if we table it? Because if we vote it down, it could still come back once everything's revised, if there is a process that works. If we table it, I'm fine tabling it with no date, but I I don't wanna to go through this again.
Staff doesn't either. I mean, as you've said, Chair, and we agree, there's been a tremendous amount of effort and time put into this, but but it's not just about this one particular lot. We've we've discovered that we needed a better process of notification. I think we've also uh pointed out the deficiencies in in section twenty one eight. We think that it would be better um served for the public to get clarity on this. And that you direct the town manager to work with open space on a proposed amendment and and a process that everybody can agree to and the right people are in the room. Uh but let's move forward beyond this. So I respectfully request the motion to table be voted down and that we give the, as uh selectman Looney indicated, that the owner walked into my office and asked what the process was. And I talked to the town attorney and the process was, you're the legislative body. And at this point, we think we've we've given you all the answers that we hope support a favorable response at the end of the day. I agree with the chair, there's no, I don't see the legislative purpose in tabling it for later discussion.
Okay, so so the motion to table is is out there. Um I'll take about all those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
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 That's two. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion to table is withdrawn. Now remake the motion, effective March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Just for clarity, the motion failed.
The motion failed, withdrawn, failed, thank you. Move effective March twenty four, twenty twenty five to approve the sale of a point three six acre parcel located at the northwest intersection of Fire Town and Owens Brook, identified as tax, I'm I'm not reading all those again. Contingent on the merger of the sale parcel into the purchaser's adjacent parcel. And the placing of a conservation restriction on the sale parcel that prohibits the development of or the placement of structures of any kind excluding fencing, a shed, and expansion of current home on the sale parcel.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion uh to remove all the words um uh after of any kind. So we would be removing excluding fencing, a shed, and expansion of current home on the sale parcel.
Okay. So do you need a second for that? Does that a second for that?
He amended the motion, yes. He needs a second.
I'll I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 That's three. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so it fails. The motion's done.
So the original motion stands.
Motion passes.
Now, the original, so my motion was an amendment.
Okay, so.
And so now we need to vote on the main motion.
So so your amendment failed. Oh, jeez. Thank you.
No.
Oh, so now I put the full emotion out there again. So move effective March twenty fourth, twenty.
Point of order, Chair, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, please.
What was the vote on the amendment?
Three, three.
It's three, three, so it failed.
Three, three, failed. There wasn't, there were no abstentions.
No. Move effective March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to approve the sale of a point three six acre parcel located at the northwest intersection of Fire Town. Contingent on the merger of the sale parcel into the purchaser's adjacent parcel. And the placing of a conservation restriction on the sale parcel that prohibits the development of or the placement of structures of any kind excluding fencing, a shed, and expansion of current home on the sale parcel. Need a motion for that.
I think you had a motion and a second.
It's already been made, it's on the table. I'll call the question.
Although, when did I call the first?
Originally before discussion.
I thought I had to redo the motion because.
Yeah, his amendment failed, so you don't have to read it.
I don't have to reread it. So as it's written, is what's on the table. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's one. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so that fails one to five. Okay. That's a lot to get that.
Done, done.
Okay. Um we're now off, we're now into the review of the minutes. So can I have a motion to approve the May third, twenty twenty five special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion effective March tenth, twenty twenty five to approve the minutes of the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Um any questions on that? There's quite a bit of con- communication, so I please ask that the public read through them. The 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 housing moratorium, um there's a memo on there that we did not get the moratorium. Um there is for the forwarding of capital projects to the planning commission, the eight twenty four referrals. There's Tom Fitzgerald is applying for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, so there's a description in here from Tom. Um the budget referendum questions are in here. The administrative public gathering permits are in here. There's a notice about Jen, which I mentioned also, and that the town manager, town clerk's office will be closed on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Um on that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move into executive session pursuant to C G S one dash two hundred six B pending litigation regarding the pending tax appeal for R R H T Trust Holdings Simsbury L L C with the board with Mark and Bob D. Is Tom here too?
Yes.
And Tom Fitzgerald.
And Francine.
And Francine. I had Francine down.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have moved into executive session, so thanks, everybody.
Do you need to wait? Do you need to um talk about selection act- action if, when we come out and then we go back into executive session?
Yeah, then the room changes.
Yeah.
Do I have to talk about that?
We're recess, you can't say recess.
Have we taken a quick dig on the other session?
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education. And live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.